We have just one agenda item, I believe. Consider a motion to approve a rezoning of a property. But first, we'll go to the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
And seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Holly, do you want to lead us on the rezoning request?
Yeah. Petitioner is requesting to rezone a property from an R2 multifamily residential district to a B2 community business district, and to amend the future land use plan from mixed high-density residential to commercial retail. And then, looking through the comprehensive plan, additionally, mixed use would be acceptable for that proposed use. The petitioner wishes to use the property as a car dealership. The property that I'm referring to is on the overhead. These two lots along 14th Street Northwest. These, this property has been used as a car dealership for many years as a non-conforming use. However, the property has not recently been used as a dealership. It's been used as other businesses, particularly an office, for a roofing company for over a year. The non-conforming use that the car dealership fell under became expired after a year. That's according to our ordinance. So to establish a new car dealership, the petitioner has made a request to rezone the property, as noted earlier. The, some of the history or background of this property, or how it became a non-conforming use, or legal non-conforming use. It initially, in 1989, was petitioned to be, the property owner, Bob Helmers, petitioned to change the non-conforming use from a plumbing company to a car dealership. The planning commission denied the change of non-conforming use, but it was approved by the city council. So that was how the car dealership was originally established at that spot. In December of 1998, the owner tried to rezone the property so he didn't have to rely on the non-conforming use designation. The rezone was denied, 9-0, finding that the rezone was not compatible at that time. The petitioner then, or the property owner then again, tried to rezone in 2001. The rezone was again denied, finding that the proposed commercial use was not consistent with the surrounding land uses, and that the, there was a CUP that specifically prohibited expansion of the use, and that was not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I did not find a conditional use permit on record regarding that particular note, but I did, did come across that earlier, 1989, change of non-conforming use, which originally, again, established the car dealership at that location. I included some information about non-conforming use, just to give you a little bit of background about that issue, and how it would be expired over time. The, I added as well, the requirements of a B2 community business district. Let's see. So the purpose is to encourage the establishment of commercial shopping centers, offering a wide variety of consumer goods and services. The community business district would serve a larger population area than a B1 district, and when located along major highways and thoroughfares, accommodate primarily automotive-oriented establishments. Principal permitted uses are anything allowed in the less intensive uses, which would be the R uses, the residential uses, and the B1 neighborhood business district. Small retail store establishments, personal services and business services, processing. Some of these are probably not really relevant anymore, but minor fabrication and repair, driving uses, home businesses, transient accommodations, commercial recreation, animal hospitals, veterinary clinics, warehousing, storage and wholesaling, and residential. Conditional uses would include some limited manufacturing, large retail establishments, and automotive services for implements, which would be what this specific use would be. So if the petitioner was successful in rezoning the property, he would be required also to get a conditional use permit to allow the automotive use. The, let's see, I'll go into that in a little bit. Some of the considerations that you would want to make would be the consistency of the proposed zoning with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan currently shows that this property is designated as high-density residential, and it is bordered by low-density residential and parks and open space. Mixed use, again, or commercial retail designation would be required for establishing a commercial zoning district in this area. And mixed use is defined as areas intended to provide a mix of commercial, office, residential, public, institutional-related uses. The areas may include a mix of retail and service commercial, office lodging, public, institutional, higher-density residential, park, and recreation uses. These uses are some of those that are currently found in the downtown Austin area, and along the 18th Avenue corridor. The commercial retail would identify commercial land uses, including retail, personal, and professional services, professional office employment that serve regional, community, and neighborhood-scale markets. The, the second consideration I have is that the compatibility of the site and adjacent properties with the uses permitted, that you should consider the compatibility of the site and adjacent properties within, with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. So, once it's zoned B2, as you're aware from earlier, some of our earlier other meetings on the same issue, anything allowed in a B2 zone could potentially be used in that area. You know, the property, once it's rezoned, could be sold or developed in any way that's allowed in a B2 zone. The petitioner, at this point, is asking to develop this as a car dealership, which had previously been located in that area, but any use allowed in a B2 could potentially be established in that area, once it was rezoned. The, the planning commission should consider if the area has become more commercial over the past 20 years, and therefore, more suitable for the proposed use in general, whether the compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with the surrounding uses, and zoning in terms of land suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values. You should consider the capacity of existing infrastructure and services sufficient to accommodate the use permitted, uses permitted, and the requested district, without compromising the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. In this instance, their infrastructure is already established, and there haven't been any issues identified in the past with that use. Or although any other commercial use, I don't know that I could say, you know, as far as traffic, or those kinds of things. The capacity, let's see. Whether the use is permitted in the proposed zoning district will cause detrimental environmental impacts, including, but not limited to, excessive stormwater runoff, water pollution, air pollution, noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other environmental harm. Whether the boundaries of the requested zoning district are sufficient to meet the dimensional regulations for the proposed zoning district. In this instance, the dimensions of the property are sufficient. They are six, the lot is 6,000 feet, square feet minimum, with 60 feet of frontage. There's at least 12,000 square feet between the two lots, and there is over 200 feet of frontage. However, before the meeting, the city attorney and I were talking about other issues that might cause problems with that zoning designation, is that they, for car use or for a car dealership, there's a requirement that there be a setback of... I'm looking at, let's see. Part D, let's see, subdivision. So in your materials, it's in the ordinance for section 11.41B2, Community Business District. It's subdivision 2. Subdivision 3D. Automotive services under conditional use permits are allowed, provided they shall be at least 50 feet from any residential district, and that the premises shall be screened by a sight-obscuring solid wall fence or vegetative screen at least 6 feet high where it adjoins in the rear or on the sides of any residential district. So in this instance, I was just measuring before the meeting, and they're close to 50 feet on the north lot up here, because of that vacant property between, although this lot is still zoned residential. So, you know, there's, it's immediately adjacent, so there's, there's no 50-foot separation there. And I think, trying to think, I didn't measure the actual dimension of this lot here. I mean, it's possible they could potentially just use this front area for car display to meet that 50-foot setback.
Lots are about 45 feet wide.
Okay. So then, there's really no, there's really no ability to do that, so a variance would likely be required to be able to, to meet that, or to allow this property to have a car dealership here, as well as a conditional use permit. The property has, as noted earlier, has been used as a, an office. That use is less intensive, just because of the, the lack of traffic, customers coming to the office. It's possible an office located in that area could have a lot of traffic, depending on what the business was. However, there may be opportunity to apply for another change of non-conforming use to a less intensive use. But I can't think of any other options for the petitioner, other than the rezone, conditional use permit, now likely a variance, in order to continue to have a car dealership, or to reestablish a car dealership in that area. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Are you saying that all three would be required? Do we have the petitioner here who would like to present his case for rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Can you come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Curtis Saunson. I live at 303 27th Drive Northwest. I grew up in Austin. I own multiple businesses in the community, have a bunch of rentals. This is something that I've kind of had a dream of for years. I've actually looked at multiple different places, heard the lease was up on this place, so I contacted Glenn Medgarden. We actually have some paperwork already done on this property, and then we found out, in getting a used dealership license, you have to have a zoning paperwork filled out. So Holly explained to me, when I came down with that form, what we needed to do. That's what brought us here today. Since then, I've done some research. I have a lot of different thoughts about the property. Glenn says he did not know, I did not know it was not zoned commercial. We all live here, I'm assuming, those of you I don't know. We all know where this is at. We all drive by it frequently. When I've been there, getting the vinyl off and the other tenant out, and just helping Glenn with getting things switched over, so we can finish our deal, which the only thing left is to record the deed. We just haven't done that yet. I get texts and calls from my friends, asking me what I'm doing there, because the street front is so busy. To me, I was kind of shocked it was not zoned commercial already, but I do get it. After being explained everything, and Holly did so well on explaining all the history on it, I, I get it. So that's what brings us here today. I have went around and talked to all the neighbors. We can use a projection if you want, but I have the numbers here. I knocked 43 homes. She told me 500 feet-ish. So I went around, and I found a lot of people that got letters. Out of the 43 homes, I don't know how.
So, if you wanted to show who you talked to, potentially. You can go around, but.
I just saved here.
Oh, we can do that, too?
That's what I got. Anyways, the numbers, I found four with no issue, but they were not available for signature. I found eight that did not answer their doors. One did not speak English, so I do not count that. I found one against, and I spoke with them for a while, the Theisans, you will hear from them. And I found 29 for. Here's a little map. If you see all of the blue squares, those are all of the houses that signed for. The NAs are just no answer. The yellows are the ones that were not available for signature, and the red was the one that I found against it.
Can you identify where your property is there?
Yes. The property is right there on that blue mark. It, it still says Timberline, the old office space that was there. So I went, you know, around, this is, I'll put a big X on it for you. That is the property.
Is 14th going left and right?
This is 14th right here, yes. 14th, the street that goes by. The college is right here, and the old key apartments that is now campus view, I think I have that number right, is right on the opposite corner. So these are the avenues, and these are the streets going north and south.
So the one that says, the one that was no, is that the one that's right next to the property?
That's the red. Yes, correct. And they are right adjacent to it. And most people did not care. I do understand, I was very happy that the Theisans were home today, and I had a chance to talk with them, and I do understand their concerns and some of the issues they've had in the past. The issues that Holly brought up, the variance, was one of their concerns, and I already told them that I would have no problem not putting cars in the back row. So I planned on using only the front row in my business model already. 15 cars is what I planned to use, so that, the variance is completely okay with me. Some of the other concerns they had, having large vehicles close to the corner, so when you come to the stop sign, and you're looking both ways, you can't see over the vehicles in the lot. More than happy to put smaller vehicles, keep the SUVs off. I'm more than happy to work with them on their concerns, and they do have real concerns, and you will hear them. The one thing that I had a hard time overcoming was the devaluing of the property. And I look at the property being vacant where it is right now. There's some garbage in there, the pavement needs a repair. It's, it's empty. It's, it's not a good-looking property. It's just sitting there vacant on an extremely busy corner. If there was someone there that took care of it, repaved the lot, worked with them on the issues that they have, the fence, I actually offered today to make more fence, if they would like coming all the way down. You can only get so close to a sidewalk. Holly would know the technical stuff on that, but I'm willing to work with them on the concerns that they have. But as far as the devaluation of the property, I have to boil back to the fact that they told me 48 years ago, when they bought their home, there was a business there then. So when they purchased their home, there was a business there already. I know the conditional use and the car lot being there forever, it was okay, and now it's not. I can't help but look at that property every time I've drove by it for my whole life, and especially these last few years. Why is that not a car lot? It's such a busy corner. It looks like a commercial location. It can't be rented for residential. I have the 21 rental properties in town. I don't even think it would pass code, as the city comes around, which they've already done, the northwest inspections, I've been through them. That wouldn't pass code for the city residential inspection, so it's going to sit a vacant lot unless we can figure out something to do with it. Here are the signatures. I had to print a third page. I just had, thank you, Holly. And it was just a very simple, telling people, "I'm not selling stuff, I'm just here to talk to you about the car lot I'm trying to work out a deal on," and explain to them that since it hasn't been a car lot for a year and a day, it cannot be a car lot anymore. We need to get it rezoned to do this. Is there any concerns with doing this? Would you support it? Do you have any opinion either way? As you can see, the vast majority was completely okay with it, and also willing to sign my form, to whom it may concern, I have no issues in support, the rezoning of 1501 8th Ave. I know the address that we have on it is 1507th Avenue, but it actually owns both addresses. I already have a bond and have insurance. Those are some steps you have to take before you can even get the used car license. The zoning was the last thing that I needed to do. So the 1501 is what we used on the bond. That address has to match all the paperwork, so that's why I have that address on there. But that they have no issues in support, the rezoning of 5001 Northwest to commercial, allowing Curtis Saunson to open a used car lot. I have two and a half pages of the signatures and addresses, adding up to 29 of the closest residents being okay with this. Do you guys have any questions for me or concerns? Anything that you can think of that I can address?
Questions for the petitioner?
I get the rezoning, and we would need the conditional use. We would also need the variance. Completely okay with working through the steps. I've done multiple things with city council and different things that haven't been allowed in the past, by doing things by the book and being a good business owner. I hope we can come to an agreement on this. I hope this is something you guys will, will consider in my favor.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So what exactly was the response of the person who said no? What was the reason? Was there any reason?
They are here tonight. You will hear from them as well. Devaluing of property, the issue of the stop sign, not being able to see when you come to the corner, you know, if there's a large vehicle there, that's a legitimate concern. If you come to the corner there at that stop sign, they live right here, so as you're coming this direction to the stop signs here on this extremely busy street, if you cannot see both ways, that is a safety concern. So it's definitely something I would follow what I should be doing as a good business owner, and keep the large vehicles not there. Put them somewhere else, keep visibility. I don't want people to get hurt. Another concern they have is right in front of their house here. It's limited parking in front of their driveway. I wouldn't want my customers to be parking there. With the variance that we talked about, having the cars in the front row, and having that in writing that I cannot show cars in the rear row, should leave plenty of parking for customers. I'm more than willing and offered and said I would gladly pay for a sign, if the city allowed it to be placed on the boulevard. Private residential parking owner, only owners to be towed at owner's expense. Let's see, what else was there? In the past, there's been some issues with the old tenants. I don't have any exact instances that they were divulging to me, but they didn't get along with some of the old owners. There were some things that happened. There's been some things in the past that have left a salty taste in their mouth. They've, they've had some bad neighbors. Hopefully, I can overcome that and be a good neighbor to them.
If there's no other questions from the commissioners, I have a question of clarification for either Ms. Wallace or Mr. Brennan. The conditional use permit expired after a year with non-use.
Actually, it's the, the non-conforming use. The CUP was mentioned in some documents, but I was not able to track that down. My belief is that maybe that was just a description error, potentially, that they meant the change in non-conforming use that the council approved, which changed it from the plumbing place to the car dealership. So that did expire after a year of not using the property as a car dealership.
So is a conditional use permit not, not an option in this? Is the only option?
It is required, but only if it's rezoned to a B2 district. So it, it wouldn't be required if it was an industrial zone. But we don't want to, we're trying to figure out a zoning designation that is the least intensive in a primarily residential area that still allows an automotive dealership, which would be the B2 zoning district, and that still requires a conditional use permit as well. So, you know, on top of the...
Is an R2 a conditional use permit?
There's no conditional use permit for an automotive business in an R2.
So this is really the only option?
This is really the only option, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
Will this be a final recommendation?
This will be a recommendation to the city council. So it would be a recommendation to either, to amend the future land use map to either mixed use or commercial retail, and then to rezone the current area, either, you know, for or against.
So as you went around the neighborhood and talked to the neighbors, I know it's your intent to open a used car lot, so I'm assuming that's what you talked about, and that's what they agreed to.
Yes, sir.
Were they made aware of the fact that by rezoning it to B2, all the other options that are then available for use of that property, other than a used car lot?
I told them it would be zoned commercial. As long as I had it, it would be a car lot. I did not come out and specifically say it could be anything if I sold it. I just told them it would be needing, needing to be rezoned to commercial to be a car lot.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there other people that would like to address the commission? If you can come forward and, and state your name and your address, please.
Glenn Medgarden.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. I was the previous owner. I did not get here quite in time to catch everything Holly said. Why did that property be reverted from a car lot to a non-conforming? What happened? Because this, other people were in there for a while.
Because it was not used as a car lot for over a year.
Well, see, I bought it with the intention of that, but because of some medical problems and the whole year of 2017, I was in a wheelchair the whole year. And I, last year, had a walker for about six months, and I'm back negotiating again. But the reason that Mr., or the Timberline Roofing was in, I needed a roof, so I talked to him. He asked me if he could rent it, so I rented it to him, you know, but I had intention of going back in there with a car lot before, but because of my medical condition, I couldn't. But that's all that property's ever been used for, for the last about 25, 30 years, is the old Thumper's Car Club, and the cleanup shop, and car sales, and I realized that these folks did have some trouble with the previous occupants, and I did myself, trying to get them out of there. I mean, I can't believe, you know, how you're supposed to keep records when you're in the car business? They all went into the dumpster, everybody, and they threw them there. Couldn't believe it. Incidentally, I'm waiting for my treaty to get, your treaty to get trimmed. What happened?
Is there any questions for Mr. Medgarden?
Well, I didn't say I did, I didn't prove the lot. I mean, there's, there's a barrier on the, right, on the east side of their house that I did completely replace, and we painted it, and it's looking a lot better than it did. But that's about all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address.
Okay. Darlene Theisland, 1502 7th Avenue.
Okay, Darlene Thyssen, 1502 Seventh Avenue Northwest. My husband and I have lived there 48 years, so we've seen a lot of businesses come and I'm waiting to... Well, let's not even go there. The reason I came up here was twofold. First of all, Glenn, you and I shared the cost of that return lot, so you did not take credit for it. Yeah, 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 yeah. And you also told me, when you stopped over, that you bought it, you were not ever going to make that into a used car lot. So you changed your mind. I'm sure you don't. Also, as far as talking to the neighbors, on our little street, on the side that we live on, there's three homes that are homeowners, okay? Across the street, there are six homes, all of which are rental properties, okay? Rental people come and go. And yes, I realize that they have an opinion, but I have a problem with people who are not vested in the area, they did not put any money into anything, just going ahead and saying, "Yeah, go ahead and do that." You know, because it's not, they're not ever going to be affected by what's going on next So that is a major problem on my part. My husband's got a few more things to say, so thank you for letting me voice my opinion.
Sir, would you like to come to the microphone, state your name and address, please?
Good evening, I'm Glenn Thyssen, I live at 1502 Seventh Avenue Northwest. The city has historically been opposed to spot zoning, and this is exactly what this Opening up a residential area to commercial use fills me with dread, because the potential for the property to go downhill, to become a, an attractive nuisance, and to spoil the neighborhood is just something that I shudder to think about. The residential, or the neighborhood now is primarily residential. It's quiet, we've got the park at the end of the street. Day doesn't go by, you don't see young families heading down that, you know, to the park to use it and, you know, making the, making the most of the facilities that the neighborhood If you put a business such as a car lot on that, on those two lots, the first thing you're gonna do is fill up the side streets with parking. There is no parking on 14th Street. It's two lanes with a center turn lane, curb to curb. So that if you have customers, if you have deliveries of, you get a semi-full of cars, he can't park it on 14th Street, he's either gotta run it up on Eighth Avenue or on Seventh Avenue, which is a dead end, and unload. The last non-conforming use that we had in the form of a car lot, we had it kinda shoved down our throats by the city council. The planning commission rejected it, the city council overruled them. Now it's just bunny talks. So I'm a little distrustful of the system right now. But like Curtis even said, he and I talked at some length about the problems. Previous owners have cleared snow from their lots onto the neighbors' properties, left the snow in the streets to, you know, further horse up the traffic flow for everybody else. The intersection at Seventh Avenue and 14th Street has a habit of forming a huge ice dam in the winter anyway, and, you know, sometimes you need four-wheel drive to get on 14th Street. But, you know, it's, once you lose control of any part of the neighborhood, and you open it up to whatever kind of business it is, especially if you change the zoning completely, then, you know, everything is out of your hands. I told Curtis my dream for that lot is to tear down that garage and put a duplex on the two lots, and get a little green space on each end, and, you know, everybody be happy, I think. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you for your comments.
One other thing, there is five in-rives pulling into that property, so there shouldn't be any problem with off-street parking, because he's only having a number of cars, he says it's only be there, there's plenty of space to park on the property.
Is there any other comments from the public? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Helmers, and I'm the one that got the zoning through in 1989 to have a car lot there. Three times, I went in front of the city to get that property zoned commercial, and I was denied each time. And so anyway, and they said to me, you know, "If you leave that property empty over a year, then your zoning for the car lot is over." And anyway, so if, I have no problem with him wanting to have a car lot there, I think that is fine, that's not a problem with me at all, but I own the adjoining property to the north end, which is a 150-foot lot by 45, and it's a bare lot, and it adjoins that property. And if they give him the rezoning, I also want mine to be zoned too, so I can put display cars up there. I won't be setting up there by putting six, eight cars up there on display, and I can rotate them, because I have a lot over on Oakland Place Southeast, at 10th Street and Oakland Place. And also, a little history on that property that I should mention, that that property in 1975 was used by a car dealer by the name of Jim Wyatt, he had Wyatt Auto Sales, and he was only on the south end. He used just the Seventh Avenue address, 'cause he only had that part. And the plumbing company was on the north end of that property. And at that time, that property was full commercial, it was not R2. And Mrs. Ostadoll was the lady that owned that piece of real estate, and she was an older lady, and she didn't realize it, and the city rezoned it to an R2. So that's how it got back to R2 in about 1978, is when they put a little piece in the Austin paper, you know, reverting that property back to an R2 from a full commercial. Because like I say, there'd always been, you know, a car lot there, and then there was a Thumpers Club, and then there was a Powish Parlor, and then there was a plumbing company on the north end with a building, and I tore that building down. And if you knew what that property looked like when I bought it, there was an old two-stall garage that had been built in 1948, and it was pretty tough-looking, and so the building was completely rebuilt to a nice-looking building like it is today. So anyway, and also, every time I got denied zoning, I think about these other situations. Glenn Medgarden's, his address is 1608 12th Street Southwest, he bought an old gas station there, and then he bought a house to the west of it, which was an R2 property, it was not commercial, and then they rezoned it to B2 commercial. And then also, another example, Shade Tree Auto Sales at 2601 West Oakland was zoned as a multi-dwelling properties, it was apartment buildings, and in front of it was a big piece of land, and it was R2. And they rezoned that to full B2 commercial. And then there was another property over on 4th Street, 910, 4th Street Northwest, and it was an R2 property, and they rezoned that property from R2 to full commercial, plus they got a piece of land that was donated to the city on the north end, and they also had that zoned in B2 commercial. So it isn't like, and, you know, there were areas that was zoned about like what my car lot was, you know, multi-dwelling or whatever. So I mean, it isn't as if the city hasn't went out there and zoned other places into commercial, and that's why I say I have no problem with Mr. Sorenson having that as a commercial property, but my property adjoins it, it's a bare lot, I actually own two lots there, but the other lot has a house on it. But anyway, I want my property also then to be zoned so I could just have display cars there only. I wouldn't have no office there or anything, I'd just have display cars on display. And so, I guess, basically, that's about... Any questions you have for me?
Have any questions? Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
Is there anybody else in the public that, Mr. Byram?
Thank you. I think it's important sometimes to just touch back with the legal principles, especially after a member of the community talks about history and gets things right, maybe from their perspective, but doesn't get things right from a legal perspective. So zoning is a concept that was generally created in the 60s and 70s, and it was developed here in Austin in the 70s. So to talk about what this property was zoned before we passed a zoning ordinance in 1978 is not accurate. Prior to 1978, we didn't have zoning classifications, because that concept in the law was just starting to develop, and Austin was developing its zoning ordinance that was put in place in the 70s. A non-conforming use is precisely a piece of property that is inconsistent with the zoning ordinance when it's passed. So this property was not zoned before we created a zoning ordinance, and when we created the zoning ordinance, it became a non-conforming use. It became a piece of property that was non-conforming to the ordinance as passed. Now, if a city decides to enforce its zoning authority against properties that are non-conforming, they run the risk and are almost assured to get accused of taking property rights without compensation violating the Constitution. So non-conforming uses are a mechanism to say, "We're not gonna force that change in use, we're gonna allow that change in use, 'cause we don't wanna take it and have to compensate for it." So that's what a non-conforming use is. It's a, it's a use that doesn't fit, but that we're not actively trying to push away or stop. Over time, you watch those uses, and they can do one of two things. They can, one of three things. They can either be maintained as a non-conforming use with no changes. So part of this property apparently was a non-conforming use as a plumbing business, and part of this property, according to the history you just heard, was a non-conforming use as an auto facility of some kind. They could have continued to this day, and there would be no pressure to remove those uses or change those uses, 'cause non-conforming uses are allowed to stay as long as they're not expanded or made worse. The second option that can occur is that when there's going to be a change in the use, you can ask for a change in your non-conforming use. And so when the plumbing business closed, there apparently was proceedings to change the non-conforming use from a plumbing business to an expansion of the car business. And that was approved when it happened, whenever that was in the 80s. So ever since then, the entire two-lot parcel has been a non-conforming use as a car dealership. The third thing that can happen to a non-conforming use is that it can expire. Because the whole purpose of them is to avoid accusations the government has taken away your use without compensation, the law says if you abandoned that use for a period of a year, that use no longer had any value to you, so declaring it expired does not result in a takings argument or a constitutional argument. Law is very settled on all of this. So when a non-conforming use is abandoned for a year, in other words, no cars are there offered for sale for a year, that use expires and it's no longer really relevant. The next step to the equation is, well, what do we have left? Well, we have a piece of property that is limited in the types of uses that it can be put to. It's a, it's a piece of property with a specific building and some paving, and we have to look at it and say, "What options are there?" Comparables are when Mayo Clinic wanted to put an ambulance bay on 14th, or 4th Street Northwest, and part of the process was we were going to have to rezone or issue conditional use permits to allow that to happen. It was right up against Hardee's and other commercial buildings, and in some ways, maybe made some sense, but the decision was made, we didn't want commercial to creep that far south, so that was denied. Other examples that we've heard of other car lots located in various places around town, I suspect if we took a close look at the history of those, we would find that they were on busy streets with established commercial businesses nearby, in areas where our comprehensive plan was suggesting that business uses or commercial uses would be appropriate as the city continues to develop. We don't have that with this location. This location, throughout many iterations of a comprehensive plan, has remained targeted as high-density residential, as a buffer between the single-family homes and a busy street, as an augmentation to the college, as an extension of the existing apartment complexes that already are in that neighborhood, as an extension of the single-family rentals that are already in that neighborhood. So as a public policy decision, the city of Austin has decided that this area should be reserved for high-density residential and not commercial uses. Doesn't mean we can't revisit that, and we're always revisiting our comprehensive plan and our zoning classifications to say, "Have things changed? Has commercial gotten closer? Does it make sense now to start to have more of 14th Street developed commercial than is already there?" Right now, if you think about it, the commercial zones are closer to the interstate, and they're closer to Oakland Avenue. You'll find B2 districts in both of those locations. You don't find it in between those locations. In between those locations, we still have residential-type uses. So before you tonight, one of the questions is, should we amend our comprehensive zoning plan, our comprehensive maps, to say that this area, this property, should be viewed more in a commercial direction than in a residential direction? That's one question. 'Cause you can't rezone contrary to your comprehensive plan. Once you've decided that more of a commercial direction is the way this property should go, then is it B1, B2, the various types? The request is for B2, so you could do a rezone to make that compatible. If you take that step, then at a future meeting, you'll have to consider a conditional use permit for an auto dealership, because an auto dealership in a B2 district requires a conditional use permit. And as we've identified, you'll probably have to consider a variance of the 50-foot setback, 'cause it doesn't look like it's possible to develop this or use this in a meaningful way as an auto dealership without some variance on that setback. All of that is in the context of a reality where this property has been a problem for a long time, for a variety of different reasons. But this property, as it currently sits, I would suggest has somewhat of a low potential for being developed as a residential use. 'Cause someone would need to tear down the existing building and remove all the asphalt, and then they'd still have a pretty narrow and long lot to try to put residential uses on that strange shaped and sized property. So there is a bit of reality here where this is a difficult piece of property to develop. And that is part of the issue that's before you, but I wanted you to think... And that is part of the issue that's before you, but I wanted you to think about it in context of our public policy, our history, our zoning ordinance, the purposes behind that, what a non-conforming use means and why it expires. And then, the other concept that was brought up is something called spot zoning. It's brought up almost every time we rezone a piece of property, no matter how big it is or how much it makes sense. This is not spot zoning necessarily. Spot zoning is declaring a piece of property to have a new zoning classification that is totally inappropriate and indefensible in the neighborhood. Reality here is, 14th Street's a pretty busy street. Reality here, there's commercial north, and there's commercial south, and there's college, and there's other reasons why that intersection, in theory, could be more commercial if that's what the public policy decisions are, but you're going to be negatively impacting residential uses that are nearby. So I don't believe that this is spot zoning, but I think you just need to consider the various steps you have to take, and then ask, is taking all those steps a pretty strong indication that maybe this isn't the right fit? And perhaps that leaves the landowner in a spot, because if a car dealership is not appropriate for this property, it's going to be heavy lifting probably to redevelop this property.
Thank you for your comments. Are the commissioners have any discussion? Or are we ready to make a motion?
I'd like to respond if I may.
Okay, we'll allow one comment from the petitioner. Please come to the microphone.
I made some notes as they were talking, I can't go through them, or?
Briefly.
Okay, I'll be very quick. This is the full block, corner to corner. There is fencing behind it, there are five driveways, the driveways do not impede any of the other driveways. The variance creates parking, any spot for snow. There are many, I think, I've never gotten, it happened to me, but at my properties, when I move snow with my skid loader, I know I can't put it in the street because you can get a ticket for it, it's not a lot. You can't put snow in the street, no matter how much snow we have. Craig, as he said, which, very well spoken, thank you Craig, it is the busiest street, one of the busiest streets in town. It is by no means quiet. Like I said, when I stop there, I cannot be there without somebody texting me. The ice dams and the things that Mr. Thiessen brought up, if there was a tenant there, my other business is if somebody falls on the ice on my property, I get sued. So I would prevent an ice dam at all costs on the corner, so I really do feel that a tenant there would be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Will entertain a motion at this time?
My concern is not the car lot. I don't have a problem with a used car lot on this site. What I do have a problem with is just about every one of the other possibilities that can go on this property once it's rezoned to B2. I think, I think there's a good reason why this rezoning of this property has been rejected and denied three different commissions in the past, and I think it should stay that way.
Do you make a motion to that effect?
If I make a motion, my motion is to recommend to council that they deny the request.
Do I have a second? Without a second, the motion will die. Okay? The motion, the motion is, set aside, I'm not sure what the technical term is.
One of the commissioners wants to make a motion to recommend to council to approve.
We, we need another motion then. Question?
This would be a motion to the council recommending approval or denial. If it's approval, it would be taking into consideration the staff report, the materials, and the comments provided at the meeting.
The city council makes the final determination.
Correct. Correct.
And if you are moving in the direction of approval, you should include a modification of the land use map, consistent with the rezoning, because we do not want to move forward with a land use map that does not match a zoning decision.
Correct, thank you. There would be two, two decisions, so one, recommending the amendment to the zoning map, future land use map, as well as the rezone of the particular parcel.
So I'm still awaiting a motion from the commissioners.
Just give it a shot, some.
I guess the only other alternative is to postpone the decision to the next meeting, which I don't think we want to do, in my mind.
We could continue the matter if there, the planning commission needs additional information. Am I correct? Mr. Byram? You just announced the next planning meeting?
We can continue the hearing if, if there's a reason to, or if there's additional information folks need for a decision. I would have to double-check, but I'm concerned that this is subject to the 60-day rule, which means that if you don't act within 60 days of the application, it's, it may be deemed approved, so again, back to...
Let me look at the application.
September 30. So we still would have...
Yeah, we should be fine.
Yep, well, we wouldn't have anything beyond that.
So is it, I guess I'm just wondering if there's just a hesitation to, you know, regarding the form of the motion, or if it's actually concerns about not having enough information? If, if you could let me know what additional information you might need to help make a decision before we continue the matter?
Part of my hesitation is with Mr. Lutz, if they sell it, you know, what could it become later? I mean, that's, that's part of my hesitation.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there a way we can do something to make it that it can only be a car lot, it can't be sold and made anything else?
Not that I am aware of.
No, there's no zoning classification, and it's only car lot.
And that the form that I gave you that the state requires for a license, there was, on the side, there was just a zone commercial, and on the side of it was that the conditional side where you could just...
So there are a couple of different ways that a auto dealership could be zoned, and the state just puts that on their form? And one of them is commercial, that it's actually zoned commercial, the other is a conditional use permit or non-conforming use, and they're all kind of included? I mean, I think one is other, so that's where, previously, it was just marked as a non-conforming use when the auto dealership, or when the license was issued.
So if it could be a non-conforming use on that form, the state would be okay with it?
Except that's not an option anymore, that's why we're, yeah, that's why we're here.
It expires, it's gone.
Is it issued anymore, basically?
Well, a non-conforming use is not something that's issued, as I explained earlier, it's a use that exists when the law comes into place, so we essentially look the other way. There's no formal action to allow a non-conforming use. There was in this case for one of the parcels when it was changed from plumbing to a car dealership, but either way, when that's abandoned, it goes away, and it's not an option to put back.
The car dealership requires the CUP, the conditional use permit. That allows us to put specific conditions in there, along with the variance, to get past the setback. Unfortunately, several of the uses within the B2 zone do not require a CUP, and once the owner has a property, they can do that, and there's nothing anybody can do to stop them.
There's nothing we can sign or drop, and is that for that?
No.
Apparently not.
More discussion among the commission? We need to make a decision here and move on. If you have questions, lay them out on the table, let's talk about them. But we need to get going on this.
Is there anywhere we can modify the recommendation to get, to leave out the modification aspect?
I'm not sure which modification aspect it would leave out.
Now, I think we have like two options into this recommendation, so I was wondering if we can just do one instead of move of them?
Because the use of this property as a car dealership both is against the land use, future land use map, which is more of a general guide of what we're looking for in the future for this property, and also conflicts with the current zoning classification, which looks at the present, there's no option other than modifying both at the same time. Because the reason you don't want to have a zoning classification that is against your land use map is you're saying that even though in the future we want this to be something other than a car dealership, we're going to say in the present it can be a car dealership. And the courts say that those two don't match, because you're stepping back, you're going away from your goal. So the land use map is a goal, every step we do in zoning should be towards that goal. So, no, we need to change, if we're going to allow a car dealership at this location, we need to both amend the land use map, which says in the future, this is commercial, we're going to go commercial, and then rezoning it as B2, and then do a CUP at a future meeting. The difficulty, and I think the one item that most of you are probably concerned about is, by going B2, it opens it up to all small retail store establishments, which would be fast food, gas station, you know, just a wide variety of higher traffic uses than a 15-car car lot. And there's not a lot of ways to limit that, because once you turn B2, this car dealership fails, the next sale is to someone who wants to put a Subway sandwich shop in there, it's B2, they don't even come to the planning commission, they just tear down that small building and start construction, so.
One comment on that, I think you stated earlier, trying to lose all of the housing, trying to put an apartment building there. Given the unique size and shape of the lot, I don't foresee a gas station, or a fast food restaurant, or a six-plex, eight-plex, I mean, for me to justify buying a lot like that for Christ's, tearing it down, removing it, and then spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a multi-complex unit, I'm going to buy at least 15 units there. It's just not big enough for me. So we have the hard reality that Craig mentioned, is if we don't do this, what are the options for this lot? What can we do?
We, we understand your comments, but it's up to the commissioners now to make a motion, either to recommend or to not recommend. Rezoning and mapping.
Right now, we couldn't get a second, so...
Bring that back up again.
All right, I'll, I'll renew my motion to recommend the council to deny the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend denial of the rezoning. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Is there any other business, Colley, that you need to bring forward?
We have no other petitions, I just wanted to mention to the planning commission that we are working on an update of our zoning and subdivision code, and we are looking at potentially getting the planning commission and council together on October 24th in the evening. If anyone's available, I will send you additional information about that, but if you can check your calendars and maybe save the date now, and like I said, I'll, I'll give you more information about the place and time as soon as that's available.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.